I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education for October 24th, 2018. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn.
Present.
Eliason.
I hear.
Evans.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. And we are very happy to welcome tonight two students from Merrill Elementary School who have come all this way to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They are Jackson Ruffer, who's in the kindergarten, and Landon, his brother, who's in the third grade. So, these boys can come forward and lead us in the pledge today.
(laughter)
(inaudible)
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 Well, thank you, boys. We have something special for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
The guy shakes your hand.
As a learning organization, it's always special to have children in this boardroom to remind us why we are here. We'll go on tonight with administrative reports. I have just several announcements. First of all, I want to remind the board and the executive team that we have a self-evaluation, well, it's a self-evaluation for the board, an evaluation by the executive team of the board, which is due November 1st. So if you haven't had a chance to complete that yet, please do so. I also want to thank the superintendent, the board, and the executive team for participating in last night's retreat, which was held here with Ted Nitski of CISA VI. We had an opportunity to develop a mission statement for the board, as well as define values and key concepts by which we want to operate. So, we made quite a bit of headway, I think, and are looking forward to additional opportunities to grow and learn as a board. On November 14th, there's a legislative advocacy workshop. It's here in Oshkosh, sponsored by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. It's one of six held in the state. And we're very fortunate because we don't often have the opportunity to have such meetings right here in Oshkosh. So if you're interested, please do sign up. Dinner is provided. It's out at the CISA VI office. And it might be slightly longer than our board meetings, but it will be worth it. I also want to thank the Oaklawn students who sent all those wonderful thank you letters to every board member. Those were really special, and we really appreciate those. And finally, I want to thank all our fall sports teams and coaches for the excellent effort and the excellent way you represented us as a school district this fall and your respective schools, and wish you well in your future sports seasons, as well as the fall, excuse me, the winter sports teams, which are already starting and are underway. So with that, I'll turn this over to the superintendent.
Thank you much, Dr. Herzog. So, we have a lot to celebrate this evening for the work and the wonderful work of our students and everyone from our schools. So we're going to go ahead and get started here with Oakwood Elementary School, recently had its first mix-up day. Students from across all grade levels were mixed up and assigned to new classrooms. Mix-it-up days at Oakwood are helping to build relationships between students and staff across all grade levels, and are making the connections with the Oakwood family even Northside Elementary and Middle Schools in the district recently participated in the Great Lakes Apple Crunch Day during National Farm to School Month. This collective apple crunch encouraged and celebrated the use of healthy, Wisconsin-grown foods in our cafeterias, and a similar event will be taking place for the Westside Schools in November. We're very grateful for the generosity of the Apple Blossom Orchard and the market in Black Creek, Wisconsin, for donating over 600 apples to our schools and our students. Nearly 80 girls from Oshkosh North High School and Oshkosh West High School recently attended the Advancing Young Women and the Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, or otherwise known as STEM, event sponsored by UW-Oshkosh. Students were introduced to women who are working in careers including healthcare, engineering, IT, welding, and more, all with that STEM focus. Additionally, many of our high school students had the opportunity to tour AP Westshore to learn more about career pathways, the company, and opportunities available right here in Oshkosh. These activities are just two examples of how the district is focusing on college career and community readiness. The Encompass Classroom at South Park Middle School recently welcomed a guest speaker from Aurora Healthcare and the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh. The students were able to learn about healthcare and job opportunities, as well as the importance of healthy communication within the work environment, and numerous technical and soft skills that employees or employers are seeking. The South Park School community also recently came together for a friendly competition between the eighth-grade girls volleyball team and the school staff. The challenge took place over the lunch hour, and fun was had by all. And I think this has something to do very closely with what you were just talking about, Dr. Herzog. This is our schools for the Walk to School celebrations. So, schools throughout the district recently participated in the National Walk to School Day by encouraging students to walk to school. Schools and students were treated to guest appearances by members of the Oshkosh Herald, Oshkosh Police Officers, city leaders, as well as district leaders. Jefferson Elementary School is focused on promoting kindness each and every day. Each month, students are nominated for a Bucket Filler Award for being leaders in the school as role models. Congratulations and great job to the latest bucket fillers. Jefferson students are also working to develop their social skills during mixed-level mashup time, a time, again, where students are learning from different grade levels, and they come to get together and learn more from one another, as well as staff members. These mashup families meet monthly and are an example of how Jefferson also promotes kindness and community throughout the entire school year. Perry-Tipler Middle School and the ALPS Schools recently recognized and participated in Safety Day activities, helping students and staff to be prepared in the event of an emergency situation. The schools held their monthly fire drill, practiced evacuation procedures, and discussed various safety topics. Students did a great job working together and learning. Specifically, "I'm not scared, but I'm prepared." Roosevelt Elementary School recently held its first family night of the school year. Parents and students learned about reading strategies, mystery science, online reading tools, and parents were able to take part of that Positive Behavior Intervention Supports survey. Dinner was also provided, and students received a free book, all thanks to the generosity of the Elks Lodge. Webster Stanley Elementary School recently embarked on the 50-state Google Hangout Challenge. As a school, Webster's goal is to connect with one classroom in each of the 50 states. Mrs. Schmidt's fourth-grade class kicked off the challenge by connecting with students in Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
Do you think we could have a connection with somebody in Florida?
You know, I have a connection in Baton Rouge, given that my mother-in-law lives right outside of Baton Rouge.
Maybe Orange County, just kind of randomly.
Ah, you know, I think I might be able to help that. Communities. So, our Community One students at Oshkosh North recently took part in a gallery walk event featuring Oshkosh then and now. I'm going to tell you, this was an incredible event that I had an honor to attend. It was open to the public, and the students had the opportunity to talk with community members and tell their story of Oshkosh then and now. And I did not let them go off easy, by the way. I asked them some very difficult questions, and they stepped up to the plate and were able to articulate exactly what they learned from a personal level, and how it makes an impact on them as students and citizens here within Oshkosh. Project revealed the rich history of Oshkosh and the importance of the buildings and people within our community. Emeline Cook Elementary School recently welcomed families for a night of fun and learning. Students were able to enjoy a glow dance while parents were invited and able to visit with classroom teachers. Families were also encouraged to attend sessions focusing on math and literacy. Lakeside Student Council recently visited the state Capitol to learn about the roles and responsibilities of a student council and how to effectively communicate. The entire Lakeside community is excited about and looking forward to their leadership that they will be providing at the school this year. I recently had the opportunity to host Wisconsin Lieutenant Governor Rebecca Cleefish as a part of her Aerospace Roadshow. We discussed the current state of our STEM programming in the district and the potential for future aerospace and aviation programs. The visit also included a tour of the WAVE Robotics Lab with students from Oshkosh West High School. Third-grade students at Washington Elementary recently wrapped up their narrative writing unit with a fun celebration. Each student had the opportunity to read their favorite part of their story aloud to the class. After they finished, a classmate was chosen to compliment the author. Every student at Washington Elementary has also been working hard to follow expectations in the lunchroom. And every day, grade levels are awarded points for demonstrating great behavior. I am very proud to report on an outstanding kindergarten classroom because they were the first class to be recognized. And when they were recognized, they were recognized with fancy tablecloths, as well as a treat. Way to go, Washington kindergarteners. Thanks to the generosity of many community members, students at Shapiro STEM Academy are able to select a Scholastic $1 book every month throughout the school year. The donation was made possible thanks to the dedication and determination of many Shapiro STEM Academy teachers. Our teachers received an overwhelming generous response from people who wanted to help get the books into the hands of our students. Thank you, community. We're continuing to spotlight a few of our teachers and sharing their reflections on why they teach. Individuals on the screen remind us of how supportive and encouraging our teachers are each and every day. We are so grateful for these individuals and for all of the teachers here in Oshkosh Area School District. As superintendent, I continue to be committed to being visible in the community and working on behalf of the school district in order to build the school-community relations, and to be engaged in our schools. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the past two weeks. Last, I have one more slide, but this next slide is extremely important. I'm not sure how much the district has done this in the past, and I think it's extremely important to recognize our principals here in Oshkosh Area School District. The month of October is National Principals Month. So this is a month for which we give special recognition to the principals of our schools for the support that they provide to their teachers and all adults within their building on a daily basis so that our students are successful. So I just wanted to take time to say thank you to each and every one of our principals for their dedication and their leadership, and just call that to recognition for the board tonight.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one other announcement just to make, just so people are aware. I sent an email to you, and I'm going to resend it to you, just so that you are aware of this opportunity. Tomorrow night in Washington DC during the American Education Research Association meeting that's happening, it's called a Brown Bag. That's where I will be tomorrow night. It's a brown, basically, it's a brown bag, Brown Lecture in Education Research. The lecture, I think, is a very important lecture topic, is talking about disruption or disrupting punitive practices and policies. So it's talking about the heart of equity issues. It is run from 5:00 our time to 8:00, or if you're on Eastern Time, from 6:00 to 9:00. It is free, so I will send you the link so that you can stream that if you would like to watch that. If you don't have the opportunity to watch it, but would like to watch it in the future, it is Tate, and it's something that you can access in the future as well. But this is a national speaker, and he's a leading scholar of urban education and teacher education. And again, he's really going to be talking about some of those equity issues that many districts across the nation are working with right now, including Oshkosh Area School District. So I just wanted to point that out to you as a reminder.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Kurtrein. Are there any district administrators' supplemental reports that we should note?
Yes, ma'am. We do have one report that we would like to highlight for you this evening. If I may please ask Ken Brown to come up, just to provide a brief update related to graduation for this, coming up for this class, for the 2018-19 graduation class.
Okay, thank you. Last year, we had our graduation at the Menominee Arena, and that was fabulous. One thing that we heard is there wasn't quite enough time, but we didn't know that. When we set the calendar last winter, we had no idea what that was going to look like. So we set the calendar for 12 and 3 o'clock, as we did the year before. We would like to adjust that to 11 o'clock and 3:30, so that families have enough time to get in and out of parking lots, et cetera, and hopefully make things more cohesive as we move forward. So that's the big piece that we would like to look at.
Okay. Thank you. We're good to go.
All right. Thank you.
And as we learned last night, that might be below the line.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking that.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Brown, Dr. Brown. Are there any other reports, any committees?
I have two.
Okay. Mr. Preschel.
My reports relate to the Policy and Governance Meeting from September 26th and October 16th. And both of those items that were in these meetings are up for in the consent agendas this evening as well. So, I'm going to start with the minutes of the September 26th Policy and Governance The main items on this agenda were, one was related to Policy 7510, Use of District Facilities, and Policy 0123, Philosophy of the Board. So, the first one relates to the use of district facilities. There was a language revision that took place in this policy that was related to practices and non-school-related, I believe, events taking place on Wednesdays and Sundays. So, what we basically did is we took out some wording that was kind of suggestive to when the policy was written several decades ago, related to the religious element of our community, having religious education events on Wednesdays and religious time on Sundays. And not disregarding that in any way, but respecting that times have changed a little bit, and not all families are as in-depth in that religious education realm on Wednesdays, but that that's still there. But also relating that there's so much stuff that's going on in our weeks for our kids that we really wanted to focus this policy in relation to providing family time for our kids and their families, to be able to do that specifically to Wednesdays. So, and then, we wanted to acknowledge that the morning part of the Sunday was really important, and that was really related to a lot of families who set aside their mornings for that religious element that is related to their families and their communities. But those were the most distinct changes, was that we wanted to add an element of family time to that, and then to add that the timeframe, that no school-related events will take place on Wednesday evenings without proper procedures, and no school-related morning events on Sundays would take place. I believe that's right. And then, obviously, the superintendent, or who she designates, would have the ability to waive this policy under special circumstances. That element has not changed in regard to this policy.
And does that policy still then require the superintendent to inform the board?
Yes, it does. That did not change. So, yep. So, the second policy was the Philosophy of the Board. This kind of originated with a discussion that Dr. Herzog had brought to us in regards to the idea of an equity statement, and about whether we would like to incorporate one into our policies, or what drives us to make changes and decisions in our community regarding our role as a board here. And what we really discussed was that this was really a full-board discussion, and not a policy, a policy and governance discussion at that time. And so, over the next several months, this will be part of our work that we do in our self-evaluations, and I think it was the last two weeks ago, we received the book of the Key Work of School Boards that we're expected to read and understand and be able to discuss when we do our next self-evaluation. So, so that's September 26th. October 16th, these are pretty straightforward here. There's two main agenda items. One was that there's a collection of policies that we needed to update a district compliance officer name in. And those were that we were taking out Mrs. Julie Conrad's name and putting in Mrs. Belinda Pinkston's name as our human services, human resources representative in those documents. And those are all on tonight's agenda as well. So, in those policies, sorry. There were 12 of them. The other was Administrator Compensation, Administrative Guideline 3410. And this was basically the discussion around the use of extending administrator vacation time through the month of July. The way it is right now is that it ends at July, and there's only a certain amount of days that they can roll over, where we were finding that the timing of July is not the best time for some teachers, or I'm sorry, administrators, because of all the summer school work that takes place. And then allowing that to roll over into July provides ample time for them to use their vacation time. Any questions? No? All right, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Preschel. Are there any other committee reports? Then, moving on, do we have anyone who wishes to speak for the non-agenda-related public forum? Anyone who would like to speak to the agenda-related public forum? Moving on, we'll go on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the board has been furnished with background information on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote, without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the Consent Agenda and will be voted on separately. I have been asked to pull Resolutions 6 and 8. Are there any other that you wish to discuss or review? Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education consider approval of 1, Minutes of September 26th, 2018, regular board meeting; number 2, Minutes of September 26th, 2018, executive session, regular board meeting; number 3, Minutes of October 10th, 2018, regular board meeting; number 4, Bills Payable; number 5, Personnel, A, Appointments, Temporary Appointments, Resignations, and Salary; number 7, Revisions to Policy 7510, Use of District Facilities; number 9, District Compliance Officer Revision to Policies, A, 1422, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity; 9B, 1623, Section 504/ADA, Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment; 9C, 1622, Employee Anti-Harassment Administration.
1662.
1662. What did I say?
1622.
22. Oops, sorry. Thank you. Glad somebody's listening.
(laughter)
9D, 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity; 9E, 2260.01, Section 504/ADA, Prohibition Against Discrimination Based on Disability; 9F, 3122, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity; 9G, 3123, Section 504/ADA, Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment; 9H, 3362, Employee Anti-Harassment Professional Staff; 9I, 4122, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity; 9J, 4123, Section 504/ADA, Prohibition Against Disability Discrimination in Employment; 9K, 4362, Employee Anti-Harassment Support Staff; 9L, 5517, Student Anti-Harassment; and number 10, Sale of Vismark Property. So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Preschel?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion, period.
Thank you very much. Resolution 6. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the high school course additions, deletions, and modifications for the 2019-2020 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I thought this would be a good opportunity for Ms. Conrad, who's been working on this with quite a group of staff in support, to provide the board with a brief overview, as well as the listening public.
So, annually, we review our high school courses and course pathways for course additions, deletions, and modifications. So, this year, two departments have basically course pathway modifications. In other words, they work together as a team, along with business partners and post-secondary such as Fox Valley Technical College, to realign and make sure that the course pathways and the course offerings line up so that it best meets the needs of students and flows seamlessly into post-secondary options. So those two departments are the Business Department. It's all modifications, making sure that the courses are introductory, and then the second course lines up to be dual-credit with Fox Valley Technical College. The second department is Technology and Engineering. And with that one, the Oshkosh Area School District has decided to move away from the Project Lead the Way national curriculum, so that we have more flexibility to partner with our local businesses and our post-secondary institutions to better serve our community and our region, and to have that flexibility piece in there. And a key to that is the robotics course, Computer Integrated Manufacturers being modified to a course called Robotics. And we are going to be working with Rave Robotics, along with business partners, in order to put choice into that and meet the needs of students within that. At the same time, we're also going to be maintaining the science equivalency credits within that pathway as well. Also, in Technology and Engineering, there are several courses that have not run in the past three years due to low enrollment, and we are just streamlining those courses the past three years due to low enrollment, and we are just streamlining those courses to get those going. There's only one proposal on here, and that's for a summer school course for credit, and that's Exploring the Great Art Doors. And so, that's an enrichment course that's going to be added for credit to our summer school offerings. And then the last thing is health occupations. We are, within our health science pathway, we're going to be changing the name of Intro to Health Careers to Medical Careers. And that's it.
Very, very nice. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
May I comment if I may, please?
Yes, absolutely.
I think this is extremely important to publicly recognize how excited we are specifically with the robotics program and the opportunity that it presents itself at this point in time, though we are pulling away from the project Lead the Way in order to provide us with some flexibility. What this does, it actually does a partnership. So, for example, the Waves Robotics Program, which has been more of an after-school type function, now our students will be able to participate in those types of opportunities during the day, gain course credit, and have it alignment towards our graduation requirements. So, this is a fabulous opportunity for our students and a fabulous opportunity to expand that program to other schools beyond West High School. So, this is something that's really exciting for our district.
And actually, Wave Robotics is currently sponsored through the Oshkosh rec department, and we actually do have students from Northwest wards and any student within our community because it's sponsored under the rec department can participate with Wave Robotics. But the key is, and Dr. Cartwright, you're absolutely right, that we want to align our curriculum so that students are better prepared and have a leg up before they enter the whole Wave Robotics competition because it's quite the competition.
Yeah. It's intense.
Yeah. And we've had students over the past two years go to China and to participate in robotics competitions with our friends in China. So, great opportunities.
And I also want to highlight and recognize just having the summer opportunity to start exposing some of our students to additional opportunities for the arts, I think is very important, just to put that out for our students.
Absolutely.
With a clever name, too.
That's from Mrs. Hyde over at Oshkosh North, and I was like, I'm all about that name. She goes, is that too bitchy? And I go, no, I think that's a great name.
I do like the Art Doors. I thought you said outdoors at first. I'm like, oh!
No, the Great Art Doors.
I like art, too. But it was outdoors, and I was really excited.
So, it's going to be themed, it's going to be projects in each of the media, but it's through the outdoor context.
Yeah.
It's going to be pretty cool.
We're grateful for your leadership on this. I know it takes a lot of effort to pull all this together, and you make it sound very simple. But I know there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, so thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion, period.
Resolution number 8. This is actually a revised resolution number 8. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the 2018-2019 tax levy outlined below as filed with the secretary to the board of education. Fund 10, $41,722,998. Chargebacks, $5,396. Fund 38, $3,715,417. Fund 39, $750,000.
$950,000.
What did I say?
$750,000.
Ah, I don't know where I got that from. Thank you. $950,213. Must be my glasses tonight. Fund 80, $1,900,000.
Or 40.
$1,900,253. Did I say it right?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Okay. For a total of $48,294,277,000. $277,000. I'll try that again. I slept on these glasses the other night. I think that's what I'm going to blame this on. Something's off here, sorry.
All right.
We need a... So moved. Second. Any discussion? I know there were some changes from when Mrs. Schnorr presented the tax information to the board last month, and I think there's some good news here tonight and some clarification on some things, including the voucher impact. So, I thought this would be a good time for an executive summary and to hear from Mrs. Schnorr and the good work she does.
Thank you. I want to thank Al Winnick. He's the one that caught my mistake where I had Fund 40 at first. It should have been Fund 80, so I want to thank Al for that. The tax levy is considerably less than I anticipated back in the summer when I was doing the budget book. Part of it is I'm always conservative because I would rather come forward with a levy decrease in the fall than an increase. So, I'm always a little bit more ultra-conservative. But part of the reason the tax levy is down, it's down from last year, is that we got a $2.2 million increase in state aid. I think that the legislature is just putting more money into equalized aid. And how the revenue limit works is that the revenue limit is on public school districts. It has been since '92, '93. It controls state aid and tax levy together. So, once you do the calculation, if your state aid goes up, your tax levy has to go down. If your state aid goes up, your tax, I mean, if your state aid goes up, your tax levy has to go down. If we were to get a decrease in state aid, we could raise the tax levy. Well, they're putting more money into state aid and not giving us an increase in the revenue limit, so it forces the tax levy to go down. So, that is what happened. We got a $2.2 million increase in state aid, so that forced our levy down. The other thing is I always estimate low on how much property values are going to go up.
Right.
I said I estimated an increase of 1% because that's kind of where we've been going about anywhere between 2% and 3%. We got a 7% increase in equalized property values. And so, that's what affects the mil rate. The mil rate is the tax levy divided by the property values. So, in the revision she did, that Sheri did today, is I had divided by the wrong number. So, our mil rate is going to be $8.94. And in the packet, I projected $9.65. We're actually going from $9.59 in 1718 down to $8.94 in 1819. So, it's a pretty significant decrease in our mil rate and a decrease in our tax levy going from 48.4 to 48.2. And in fact, if you look at 1617, our levy's down just shy of $1 million from where it was in 1617. So, the other thing I just want to briefly mention is the private school voucher program. That caused our levy to be at $1.6 million. So, if there wasn't the voucher program, you wouldn't be levying $1.6 million to cover for those children that go to private schools in our community. It's limited to 3% of your student population, so that would be 299 students for us. We actually have 234 students, so we're one of the few districts that do not currently have a waiting list. We have 155 students in K8, and they receive $7,754 per student is deducted from our state aid and sent to the private school. And we have 79 students in 9 through 12, and that tuition is $8,400 per student that's subtracted from our state aid and sent to the private schools. So, that's a total of $1.6 million roughly, which is an increase of $752,000 from what we had in 1718. So, that's a significant part of our tax levy calculation. So, that's basically a summary of what I provided you in the staff report.
Ms. Schnorr, I just want to highlight three things if I may, please. With our voucher program, just a question for you on the technicality. Are we privy to knowing who those students are that take advantage of that program for the private schools?
No, we do not. I find that a little frustrating because we are not told who those students are. And DPI said that that's because it's a student privacy issue and a confidentiality issue, but we don't get to know who those students are. So, we're relying on DPI to make sure that it's truly an Oshkosh resident student, that it's not someone who put the wrong address down or someone who goes in. We're totally trusting what the DPI gives us on that.
And just a clarification as well with the private schools. For those students, though the public funds are going to private school situations and that, for those students, do they have to, and this may be a Julie Conrad question, I apologize, do they have to participate in the state assessments as those students who participate in public school, though they are attending private school on public money?
Correct. If they are a voucher student attending a private school, they are subject to the same accountability measures that students in the Oshkosh area school district or in the public schools are.
Correct. And the results of those accountability measures are included where?
They are found on the DPI website, so you can look up those pieces. Just as we have scorecard cards and other accountability data pieces like in Y's public portal, you can also go out and you can find the vouchers and the private schools that participate in the voucher system. You can go out there and see their results.
I greatly appreciate it. Do they have to proctor them the same way?
Yes. It's a standardized test.
I mean, for us, it's a big deal, and it's really complicated, and so, private school kids don't necessarily have to take the test, but the ones receiving the voucher dollars do.
Exactly.
And they're required to do it, sorry.
No, go ahead. Those numbers are separated from our numbers, so when we have...
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, when we get our numbers, they're not including their test scores?
That is correct. Those resident students, their test score results do not track back to the Oshkosh area school district. They are attached to the school, the private school that they attend, that accepts voucher dollars.
Is this, Sue, I don't know if you can, has our numbers, do you think that the numbers have increased or are these, have the numbers increased on our students going there or are these students that were already there? I keep hearing that some of the students that were already there now are doing voucher program, that were already there. Is that true?
Well, we don't know 100% sure because, of course, we don't know who those students are. But on a statewide basis, over 75% of the students participating in the voucher program were already in those private schools. So, if we can, you know, put that down to the district, I would guess that we would be like other districts in that at least 75% of the students attending there were already attending there. But again, because we don't know the name of the students, we can't make that specific to Oshkosh.
Right. Thank you.
But we would have identification information on students who were Oshkosh area school district students who then transferred and asked that their records be following them, right?
Yes. We would have, if a child transferred from our school to a private school, we would have that name of that child.
Yeah.
But we would have no way of knowing whether they transferred because they got a voucher or they just transferred because they wanted to go to school.
Thank you. Good clarification. Thank you.
But, you know, our enrollment numbers are going up, not down.
Right.
And we haven't tracked children that have left and gone to private schools. I suppose that that would be something we could track.
We can run a report, and we can say, this student attended Oshkosh area school district, and then this next year they enrolled, and all we know is that it was a private, private parochial school or it was home-based education or whatever the choice of that family is.
But because our total enrollment is not going down as a district, you would have to assume that the majority of those voucher students or students that were already there.
If I may, I want to make one other point because I think it's very important to recognize a very critical fact for recent action that also has been, that took place that also contributes to why the mil rate is going down or their tax levy impact is actually down from what we originally projected. So, recently, what has occurred is that the state is now saying that there is a minimum funding that is occurring per student. And the critical piece on this to acknowledge is that it's for districts that have a referendum that has passed. And so, I want to put that out there and thank our community because we do have a referendum on the table right now that passed with our community, and because of that, we were eligible to participate in that minimum funding, as you might say. However, in the future, because what they're looking to do is, over the course of the next few years, they're looking at that minimum funding slightly increasing each year for each year for which a district has a passing referendum. If at any point in time, the district does not have a passing referendum, then the district is frozen, as you might say, at the last point in time for which there was a passing referendum on the books. But if the district were to go back after a failed referendum and then try to go again for a referendum, then at that point in time, it would pick it back up if it passed the second time through.
So, they're incentivizing referenda.
I would not necessarily say that they're, actually, I would say they're probably dis...
We were eligible because we passed.
Because we passed, but if we were to go again in the future, we have to be very cautious about going in the future because if we go forward in the future with a referendum and it fails, we're actually penalized.
I should have worded it, they're incentivizing passing referendums.
Correct.
Referenda.
Correct.
That's curious.
So, I just wanted to at least take time to acknowledge that on a public basis and to also say publicly to our community, thank you very much for the support of our school district. Because it is paying off in the amount of support that we get from the state in order to operate with our students.
I could piggyback on that a little bit. Part of that is there's a low-spending provision that was implemented last year, and we are a low spender. So, every year, we get to increase our revenue limit by $100 per pupil until we max out at, I believe, $9,800. We're at like $9,400 right now. That's the portion that if we would have had a failed referendum, they wouldn't have allowed us to use that provision because their rationale is your community didn't approve an operating referendum for you. Why would we now allow you to just add this tax levy on this side? But because our community said, yes, we approve an operating referendum so you can raise the tax levy, then we almost, like, we have their permission to use that low-spending provision.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Schnorr.
Okay. Added to.
Yeah. That makes a little sense.
Any other comments or questions?
Curious.
I want to thank you, Mrs. Schnorr. There's a lot of work that goes into this budget process. And again, you make it seem rather simple and small, but it's not. It's big. We appreciate your work on that. Well done. Thank you.
Thanks for using the terms we understand.
Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmsted?
Aye.
Olmsted, aye. Motion, period.
Thank you. Do we have any individually considered resolutions tonight? Seeing none, do we have any requests for future agenda items? I would like to suggest two. I would like, I know it's a big deal and that there's a lot involved, but I would love to have at least a few representatives of the Oshkosh then and now group come to a future board meeting.
Oh, yeah. Good idea.
Set up some of their displays so that we get a flavor for the significance and magnitude of what they've learned and produced for this community.
That would be awesome.
And then, based on the work we did last night with Ted Nitsky of CISA 6, I'd like to see us implement the plus delta meeting evaluation beginning in our next meeting. That might require a policy change because that would be written into the agenda template, but we can deal with that. Are there any announcements? If not, I would entertain a motion...
Wait a second. Sorry. So, are you suggesting at the next meeting to bring forward a policy that involves that or involve that into a policy?
No.
What are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that we just incorporate it.
Okay.
And that we also review the policy, and if we need to review the template as defined in policy, that we do that moving forward.
Okay.
Because we could handle it under announcements.
Sure.
On a temporary basis. So, we're legal that way. Good catch, Mr. Peschel. Glad you're all watching out for me today. I obviously need it. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for: 1. Considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under section 19.85, paren 1, paren F of Wisconsin statutes. 2. Review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a middle school student who engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others and endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee or school board member of the school district in which the pupil is enrolled under section 120.13, paren 1, paren C, paren E of Wisconsin statutes. 3. Review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, endangered the property, health, or safety of any employee or school board member of the school district in which the pupil is enrolled and engaged in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules under statute 120.13, paren 1, paren C, paren E of Wisconsin statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?